Call the regular monthly meeting of the Ellsworth City Council to order Monday, February 12th, 7:00 PM. All councilors, with the exception of Councilor Hudson, are present this evening. Item number one, item number two, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, Rules of Order. We run the meeting under Robert's Rules of Order, which were voted in at the organizational meeting in November of 2017. If you wish to speak during the meeting at some point on an item, we ask that you come to the podium, state your name, and also if you have any phones, pagers, or pigeons with you, we'd all turn them off so we don't get buzzed in. Item four, Adoption of the Ellsworth City Council Minutes. The December 18th, 2017, regular council meeting and the January 8th, 2018, regular council meeting.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor? Opposed? I'll, I'm in favor of the December 1, I'm not standing on January since I wasn't here. Item five, City Managers' Reports.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to pass tonight. We're in the winter doldrums right now, not that there aren't a lot of things going on, but I would like to mention.
Yeah, knew we couldn't do it. Knew we couldn't do it.
Now, I would, once again, point out our public safety people because the roads have been quite slippery as of late and they're, and I just caution the public to slow down, drive carefully. This time of year, the weather can vary very quickly, so get everybody home safe.
Thank you very much. Item six, Committee Reports. Any councilors like to report on any meetings they've been doing in the last month?
I would. It seems like a long time ago now, I think it was several weeks. I went to the harbor commission meeting and, and the good news is that they made $882 in donations and it probably helps now that they're working on budget. Bad news is that there was quite a lot of damage to the, to the harbor because of, there was a, ice froze over and two of the pilings were lost, two are tilted, dolphin has gone bad and what happens is that if it doesn't get fixed, we're in danger of really not having much at the harbor at all this year because of, you know, very few places to tie up a boat, things like that. The gas tank project is a go and it's going to be very nice to be able to sell diesel fuel there. There's been a lot of interest shown by boaters in coming up into the harbor to load up with diesel. And that's about all. Oh, and later on this evening, we will be talking a little about the...
Yes, we will.
What we're going to do about the dolphins.
I don't suppose the $882 will pay for the damage?
Yeah, but...
Nope.
But we will...
Feed the workers.
We will save the dolphins.
Anyone else? Councilor Fordyce?
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Recreation Commission met the night we were scheduled to meet. We had a snowstorm, so we pushed it to the night after that, Thursday night. We entertained almost all of the organizations that were requesting money through the recreation budget this year. Little League did not show up, so we will ask them to come to the council presentation on recreation budget since they're basically new this year to us. We listened to everybody. Then the Recreation Commission sat around for another hour and discussed funding levels and reasons why, and if not already, the chairman of the Rec- Commission will have that recommendation to finance this week for inclusion in the budget book. And then the big news is Saturday, we had questionable weather. We canceled the fireworks at 8:30 in the morning because three different weather forecasts showed rain all afternoon and evening. So if the check has been stopped, we're all set. If not, they've promised us credit for another shoot later this year and Recreation Commission will discuss that at our meeting in March. But we had a very successful winter carnival. The people that showed up, we had, I think, 29 or 30 cardboard sleds at the black house before it started raining. Had, kids had a great time, parents were good. We only had two trucks get stuck on the access road, slid off the side, thanks to our city highway group that not only came up Friday and plowed the entire field for parking out back, they also came up on an emergency call Saturday when it started raining and that dirt road became glare ice. So I requested from our highway foreman, a sand truck, because it was our party. I felt we, as a city, were liable for damage and injury, so he sent a guy right up, took care of it, never had another incident all day, so hats off to them. They did a great job for us in the middle of a snowstorm. And we gave out a pile of prize coupons for a vendor that was there selling food. My favorite was the toasted cheese sandwich and a cup of tomato soup. It just hit the bill. Saturday afternoon, we moved all the action to the ice skating rink, even during the rain. The kids were there skating, they were having a blast. They insisted on human bowling even though there was a half an inch ice, water on top of the ice. We had hockey going on with tennis balls, we had human bowling, we, it was, everybody had a good time and I was very pleased with the turnout for such poor weather. So we've had some issues with the ice skating rink this year. Mother Nature has worked against us almost every time we turn around. Heavy rain, then snow, melt. It has not been a good year, we admit that, but it's not for lack of effort from the Recreation Commission. It's been Mother Nature beating us at every turn. So, end of report.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none, move on to item seven, Citizens' Comments. We open this up so that anybody who wants to speak on anything that isn't on the agenda, we'll give you three, four, or five minutes. And like I said earlier, matter of just coming to the podium and letting us know who you are.
Good evening, I'm Nicholas Navarre. I'll be talking about the Ellsworth Green Plan this evening and in particular, the Walkability/Bikeability Subcommittee in which I chair. Subcommittee in which I chair, the Walkable/Bikeable Community One, is focusing on making a plan to make Ellsworth a community that is welcoming and friendly to pedestrians and cyclists. So far, we have accomplished several things in this field. We conducted a citywide community survey to find out what people, where they walk now, where they live, problems that they see in current infrastructure. We had 225 respondents on that survey, which was seven more than the citywide visiting survey, so we feel that's a pretty good turnout. We're happy with that. We also created a list of missing crosswalks to present to the city planner, who is going to be addressing those and figuring out why those are missing, if it's, if they can be replaced, if they can't be replaced, what the story is with those this year. And basically, what a missing crosswalk is, is where the infrastructure is all there. There's curb cuts or sidewalks, however, there's just no little paint and we feel it's very important to make sure as many crosswalks that we have can be painted to make sure pedestrians are visible, as well as send a message that our community is welcoming to pedestrians, for visitors. Something else we accomplished recently is we got a $1,500 grant from America Walks to do work on the pedestrian trail behind the Ellsworth Public Library. We will be doing this work over the course of the summer with the Ellsworth Garden Club, who is also matching the funding, so that is one of our projects we will be directly working on this year. And our work going forward will be based directly off of our survey results. We're going to be focusing on what the community has said their problems and coming up with solutions to fix those, documenting what those might be and seeing where people are walking now and how we can implement what works in other areas of the city. So if you have any questions or want additional information or a copy of our survey or to meet with me or the rest of the committee, feel free to send me an email. You'll find my contact information right at the bottom of the handout here. So if anyone had any quick question right now, I could answer that.
Nick, about how many missing crosswalks did we have?
I just looked up that number and that was 17.
Hmm, okay. Mostly in the downtown area?
Um, pretty much. Yeah, there are, there are some on Bridge Hill, some around, but mainly downtown where you'd find the most density of streets with cross, sidewalks is where they're located, so mainly a few blocks off main streets where you fear the most problems, but then in the outskirts, you see here and there, there's some forgotten.
Nicholas, is your information also available on the city's website if somebody wants to get ahold of you?
No, our information is not available on the city website. We are a slightly separate entity from the city. We're initiated directly by the Garden Club, so we are currently on a Facebook page, as well as some of our other participating organizations may post certain things on their websites.
Did you, did you have any other copies of this that...
No, that's all I have today.
You got a file already?
Oh, okay. Whoops, good throw. Nice save.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Couldn't have been a name drop.
Hello, my name is Spencer Patterson King. I live here in Ellsworth. I am here to ask the city of Ellsworth to adopt Indigenous Peoples' Day in lieu of Columbus Day on the second Monday of each October. Doing so, I think, would be in keeping with the city's record of recognizing Native Americans' contribution to Ellsworth, like the recent renaming of the Street to the High School as Leedock Street. It would also mean choosing not to exalt a man who, in chronological order, underestimated the size of the earth by about 500%, despite in well-known, accurate calculation by Aristocenes about 1,700 years before, who slaughtered, maimed, started the transatlantic slave trade, took children as sexual slaves, committed genocide on Hispaniola, and was deposed of governorship. Indigenous people have lived here, worked here, and built the culture of Maine for thousands of years as artists, professors, historians, activists, actors, athletes, politicians, and you name it, right? So for instance, in part to showcase the many award-winning Wabanaki artists, the Abbey Museum is leading the Abbey Museum Indian Market this May, 18th to 20th, featuring 75 indigenous artists from all over the U.S. and Canada. It'll feature an indigenous film festival and a fashion show, the Abbey Museum Fashion Show at the August Midsummer. I don't know if you know, but it was a huge hit. And events like that showcase and build the unique culture of Maine. And this is continuous, so this coming year will be the 25th Annual Native American Festival and Basketmaker's Market, full of song, dance, demonstrations, art, all kinds of stuff. I feel like it's only fitting that the city of Ellsworth encourages the recognition and honoring of the historical, contemporary, and ongoing contributions the Wabanaki make to this place that we all love, and I've taken the liberty of drafting up a possible resolution modeled on other Maine cities' resolutions, which I think was distributed to last week.
Yes, it was.
So, obviously, just a thought, but it is, it is based on other resolutions that are passed in the state and that was made in consultation with different Wabanaki leaders like the tribal ambassador from the Penobscot Nation, Molly and Dana, and with Clarissa Vassida of the Holden Band of Malasita. And if I may, she wasn't able to make it, but Molly had a statement and I'd like to read that if I, if I could.
Yes.
The movement in upwards of 50 cities and towns across the nation to make the switch from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day has sparked a wave of important conversations about race in America that have helped us progress in a positive way towards truly honoring the original people of these lands. What started as a grassroots movement has evolved into a powerful political statement. We are faced with the important question of what is honor and who is deserving of it. Celebrating Columbus, a man who was put on trial for war crimes against indigenous people and started the attempted genocide of our nations, is saying that his cruel practices and belief, "we were less than human," is something that Americans want to acknowledge and hold on to as truth. By taking this day back and redirecting the honor to the first people of the land, we make a sacred stance that makes us feel that the sacrifices of our ancestors are meaningful and that they are not forgotten as just members of slaughter bodies in the conquest for conquering this country. Indigenous people have made lasting contributions to this country and these lands are our homeland. By renaming this day, we pay proper respect where it is due, and on behalf of the Penobscot Nation, I humbly thank you for considering this change. Molly and Dana, tribal ambassador of Penobscot Nation.
Thank you very much. Any question of the councilors?
I would ask if you had a copy of that that you could give the clerk for inclusion in the official record?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor?
Not to put you on the spot, but just, I'm, one of the things that I think is important, my understanding, and I could be wrong, but I don't think this type of resolution request in terms of a permanent recognition has come before the city council, so one of the, one of the questions I have is just, do you have any thought about criteria that we should establish in terms of dealing with these types of requests as a general practice so that we can vet each one in, on some consistent basis?
I don't really, what happened was I had planned to make my comments and then I got carried away and drafted a resolution anyway because I wanted to present the council with something to look at as a reference. So whether or not you do anything with the verbiage I, I put to you, that's completely your call. As for, as for a process, you know, I leave that to, to the city.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item eight, Presentation of Awards. I understand the firefighter of the year award will be tabled as the gentleman is under the weather. Next, Mr. Edmund Murray, 25 years of service with the Ellsworth Public Library. Proclamation from the city. The city of Ellsworth proudly presents the certificate of service to Edmund Murray in recognition of your 30 years of service. That was wrong. As custodian and maintenance officer for the Ellsworth Public Library. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth. Presented this 12th day of February 2018, signed by David Cole, city manager, and Heidi Noel Grindel, city clerk. 20 years.
Yeah. Seems like just yesterday, doesn't it?
You're aging fast.
Always seems like 25.
How many is it?
Next item on the agenda, the consent agenda, a fairly lengthy one tonight. Item number nine, Council Order Number 021800, request of the Deputy Treasurer/Tax Collector to accept payments on tax-acquired timeshare units per the attached spreadsheet and to authorize the city manager to release said properties through municipal quitclaim deeds. Item 10, Council Order Number 021801, request of the Deputy Treasurer/Tax Collector to release properties redeemed during the 30-day redemption period ending May, uh, Jan- January 11th, 2018 through quitclaim deeds. The complete list is available in the city clerk's office and authorize the city manager to release said properties through municipal quitclaim deeds. Item 11, Council Order Number 021802, request of the Deputy Treasurer/Tax Collector for approval of a real estate purchase installment contract, a repick, between the city of Ellsworth and Tammy Carter. Item 12, Council Order Number 021803, request of the Deputy Treasurer/Tax Collector for approval of a real estate purchase installment contract between the city of Ellsworth and Robert Snow. Item 13, Council Order Number 021804, request of the Recreation Commission to appoint Tammy Mode as a member to the Recreation Commission, term to expire June 30th, 2019. Item 14, Council Order Number 021805, request of the city manager to appoint a representative and alternate to the Main Service Center Coalition. Item 15, Council Order Number 021806, request of the Housing Authority to appoint Jared Wilber to the city of Ellsworth Housing Authority Board, term to expire January 1st, 2023. Council Order Number 021807, request of the Board of Appeals to appoint Michelle Began, currently an associate board member, as a full board member, term to expire June 30th, 2022. And lastly, Council Order Number 021808, request of the Board of Appeals to appoint Jared Wilber as an associate board member, term to expire June 30th, 2019. Is there a motion?
Anybody want any of them taken off?
Oh, I'm sorry. Would anyone like to have any particular items pulled from this for discussion?
I'd move Consent Agenda as read, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All those in favor? Under New Business, item 18, Public Hearing in Action on the Issuance of Business Licenses. The first being LGOV's LLC, DBA Governor's Restaurant, 253 High Street, for renewal of a City Class C license Victular Liquor and renewal of a State Restaurant Class III and IV Malt and Vinous Liquor License. Any, everything's all set? This is the public hearing on this license. Is there anyone that would like to speak on it? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Next is Sanjiva Abeya Sakara, DBA Esseran Dib, Two State Street, for renewal of a Class C license Victular Liquor and renewal of a State Restaurant Class III and IV Malt and Vinous Liquor License. I'll open the public hearing, if there's anyone that would like to speak on this. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Item 19, Council Order Number 021809, request of the Deputy Treasurer/Tax Collector to offer for sale by sealed bid various properties that have been acquired for non-payment, non-payment of real estate taxes. The complete list is available in the city clerk's department.
Hello. The foreclosure date for unpaid FY16 taxes was December 6th, 2017. Those parcels that foreclosed were mailed a 30-day redemption letter, which states that all taxes, interest, and lien costs must be paid within 30 days in order to redeem their property. In accordance with Chapter 10, ordinance for the Maintenance Administration and Disposition of Tax-Aqupired Property, a resolved to offer for sale by sealed bid on the remaining unpaid parcels is being requested at this time. The remaining unpaid parcels include 35 timeshare units. The properties are all detailed in the attached documents.
Question or discussion of the board?
I just have one comment. It's the first time that I have seen so many that appear to be close to or in prime time. You're getting some values that are, they're way above what, what we've done. I haven't looked up every one of them, but there's some that are, oh, nice, nice weeks.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
I'll approve Council Order 021809.
Second.
Do you want to read your question of the motion?
Do I need to? So request of the Deputy Treasurer/Tax Collector to offer for sale by sealed bid various properties that have been acquired for non-payment of real estate taxes. Complete list available at the city clerk's department.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor? Item 20, Council Order Number 021810, request of the city manager to accept conveyance of a parcel of land from the Ellsworth American to the city of Ellsworth for the purpose of facilitating parking lot improvements within the Water Street area.
As you know, the city has budgeted up to $200,000 for the reconstruction, rebuilding of the parking area of the Hun Water and Main Streets. As part of that effort, I'm proposing this evening that the city take the Ellsworth American up on their offer to notate land to the city to help facilitate this project. If you look back to 1995, at that point, the city council supported the conveyance of a parcel of land in that area, this particular parcel, to the Ellsworth American in order to help facilitate an economic development project in the downtown, namely a 6,000-foot production facility that stands down in that area today. The land was conveyed in the form of a 1.3-acre parcel that was part of the city parking lot in order to achieve lot coverage ratios required under the city uniform zoning ordinance. Fast forward to today, we're looking at rebuilding that lot, that particular lot which was conveyed to the Ellsworth America, American, included some very restrictive deed covenants with the land. For all purposes, it was controlled by the city through restrictions that could not be built on, that remained as public parking, and it was to be regulated for parking by the city. It was public parking before the 1995 transaction. It's been public parking since that time and will continue to be public parking. Today, the lot coverage ratio requirements no longer exist per amendments to the uniform zoning ordinance in 2012. And while the city enjoys control of the site through deed covenants and restrictions, I've discussed the matter with Alan Baker from the Ellsworth American on numerous occasions. It certainly would be cleaner to be in the title of the city, given we're looking at doing long-term improvements to this parking lot area. Mr. Baker, on behalf of the Ellsworth American, has offered to... Mr. Baker, on behalf of, uh, the Ellsworth American, has, uh, offered to, uh, donate the property back to the city. There is a letter in your packet from Mr. Baker to that effect. Terry Carlisle from the Ellsworth American is with us tonight. I would note that in researching this, I saw at least two current councilors that were party to that transaction, and, uh, I believe it was the right thing to do back in 1995, and this is the right thing to do now. So, uh, um, if you agree, the suggested motion would be to approve the request of the city manager to accept the donation of this parcel of land, uh, as previously stated by the chair. And I can answer any questions you have, and again, you have a representative from the Ellsworth American here tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cole. Counselors, questions or discussion?
Seems to be pretty cut and dried.
Just one for the record correction. I heard you say 1.3 acres, it's .13 acres.
I'm sorry, I had my digit on.
Just for the...
.13.
Yeah, just, just for the public, it's not a big piece of land.
No. But it's a very central piece of land to all that's down there.
Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to, uh, approve the request of the city manager to accept the donation of a parcel of land from the Ellsworth American to the City of Ellsworth for the purpose of facilitating parking lot improvements behind Water and Main Street.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Terry Carlisle from the Ellsworth American, I want to thank you, but I also want to remind everybody that in 1995, the Ellsworth American was considering moving its printing operation, its whole operation, up into the building on the Thorson Road, because we didn't have enough space where we were, and this council and the then-city manager came up with a very unique, um, solution to that problem, uh, by allowing us to build where we are today and keep our 50 employees downtown. For that, I am forever grateful, because I have sat on Main Street for the last 40 years, and sitting on the Thorson Road was never my idea of a good time, so thank you very much.
August would be a good time on the Thorson Road, you see the activities.
Well, Terry, welcome to Ellsworth.
I think our thanks should be conveyed to Mr. Baker as well.
Yes.
At the head of the council.
Will be conveyed.
Will? Item number 21, Council Order Number 02180, uh, 1811, request of the city manager to accept a proposal from Prok Marine for emergency structural repairs to the marine facility and supporting structures at Harbor Park.
As, uh, Councilor Moore noted earlier in the meeting, uh, there was significant damage done down at the park to, uh, piers that need to be replaced or reset, the dolphins, uh, uh, this was, uh, due to the severe weather conditions earlier in January, uh, an astronomical high tide of near-wrecked proportions, freezing thaw, uh, ice, you name it, and, uh, the damage is extensive, um, based on Prok's estimate, it would cost, uh, their quote is $75,395 to come up and do the necessary work. I would note that, um, $23,000-plus dollars of that quota mobilization, uh, that's how this business works, marine construction can be expensive, because you need specialized equipment, and, uh, because, uh, the companies like Prok have quite a bit of work on their hands, uh, even if we sign up now, they're looking at a June 1 completion date, and that is on a best efforts basis, so it's imperative that we get in their queue, uh, and get lined up. Andrew McCullough, the city's, uh, consulting engineer on the project, investigated the situation, and given the specialized nature of the work and Prok's familiarity with the harbor, it makes sense to go with Prok. This does not mean that if there's additional work that needs to be done, uh, down in the harbor, we can't add it to the menu later, but it is imperative to, uh, let Prok know that, uh, we want to engage them and get them up here, uh, because as Councilor Moore noted, uh, if we are not able to get these repairs done in this late spring, uh, it will bite heavily into, uh, the voting season. There is a, um, memo from, uh, Engineer McCullough attached to your packet recommending, uh, this approach. Uh, the Harbor Master, Adam Wilson, is here tonight, the Chair, uh, Mark Remick of the Harbor Commission is here tonight, they can speak a lot more, uh, apt about, uh, the conditions and the needs than I can, and I'm sure, sure they would, uh, en- entertain any questions the council has. Otherwise, uh, uh, we are looking tonight to get authorization to move forward and engage Prok. I would suggest that the financing for this can come from unallocated bond anticipation note proceeds from the, uh, uh, January sale, uh, but either way, uh, we need, whether it's that or future funding, we need to go forward and, uh, line up Prok now in order to meet this timetable.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Counselors?
But, first of all, I think he's absolutely right. We can't afford to, uh, wait very much longer in order to get Prok here in a timely fashion. They've done a lot of work in the harbor in the past, and they do quality work, and there's, I think there's some things that are going to be done that might, uh, better off they'd been done earlier. Harbor Master probably could speak on that.
Counselor Ford?
I would suggest that, uh, we do this project, or we close the harbor for the summer. And I'm not willing to do that. That is a gem that we have down there, uh, you can't put the floats out there, can't put the, the rentals, um, areas down there, can't put in the sewer pump down there until this work gets done, and I, I wholeheartedly agree, I think Mr. Cole has come up, and the Finance Department have come up with a, uh, funding plan that, that's acceptable, and, uh, I will support the motion when it's entered.
Do a motion now?
Mr. Chairman, move, move the request of the city manager to accept a proposal from Prok Marine for emergency structural repairs of the Harbor Park Marina to be funded through the reallocation of bond anticipation note proceeds.
Second. Did you want to put an amount in there, counsel?
No.
Okay. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Besides, Adam doesn't want to mow grass all summer.
Item 22, public hearing in action on amendments to the Ellsworth Water Department terms and conditions. Good evening, Mr. Winslow.
Good, how are you? So, as of now, the main PUC does not have anything on record where the city has voted to invest or not to invest since the water department was city-owned in 1985. Um, if we choose to not invest, we could have the problem of paying for at least half of developers' projects to get water to their properties, which in turn, that cost would go back to the right payers, because we'd have to increase rates to help cover that cost. If we choose to not invest, as we've continued since 1985, it's just been a practice that has happened, we would be all set. In your packets, you should have a copy of Chapter 65 and the, the 6106, which actually really should explain most of it, as far as the legalities go.
Counselor?
Manager Cole, in, in state's world, this would be called an opt-out. I mean, we have to pay for our share unless we opt out of that particular program.
In Chapter 65, there's actually a formula that works it out, which would tell us how much we would be responsible for.
But I guess, follow-up question. If we had a project, all, let's say, was going to go out in the middle of the Buckswort Road stretch, and... No, that's a bad one, because we have water out there. Um, north, north of, um, Mark's rental unit on the Bangor Road, and we saw the benefit to partnering with a developer, because it would open up more development up there, would we be allowed to change that?
I believe we are still allowed to do that.
Just as not automatically?
But it would have to go to a, a vote and...
Okay.
Because that cost, again, would go back to the right payers.
And probably a PUC review? Or not?
Definitely a PUC review.
Okay.
Anyone else? Is there a motion?
We haven't had the public hearing, have we?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, we have not. This does require a public hearing, it's now open if anyone would like to speak on this matter. Seeing none, jumping the gun? Close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the changes in the Ellsworth Water Department terms and conditions to not invest in private water lines and projects.
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 21, Council Order Number 021812, request of the water superintendent for acceptance of a private water main as a city-owned and operated water main and associated easements as part of the Beckwith Pines housing project.
So currently, this water line that feeds Beckwith Woods on Beckwith Court is an eight-inch, and it's a private line. The city has no, no records at all of what materials went in, how it was installed. We do know that going up the first portion of the driveway, the first 200 feet, it is under some fairly large pine trees. If this vote goes through, it is understood with the developer, Mike White, that these trees will be removed and they will not be replaced by the city. So any damage occurred from that, from a leak, would be at the developer's expense.
And that would be reflected in the easement?
Yes. So in front of the Beckwith Woods Association buildings, the water line is about eight feet from the building, there are trees and decorative light poles on top of the main, so that's why I'm asking to not accept that portion. So the first 200 feet would go to Beckwith Woods Association, and if Mike White's project goes through, he would split off from there for the Beckwith Pines portion, and those two sections will remain private.
Mr., Mr. Chair, I would add to that, what's the impetus behind this, is that the PUC, uh, requires that if you're connecting one private line to another private line, that...
If you have two customers coming off from one private line, it then becomes a public main.
So that's what's driving this, and, and, uh, and it came about as part of the, uh, request before the planning board for Beckwith Pines, uh, an eight-unit townhouse project. I would note that, uh, if the council authorizes the superintendent to accept the property, there's still a number of conditions that have to be met, including the condition of the line, but also the granting of an easement from the necessary parties on conditions acceptable to the city.
I do have a copy of the plans, if anybody would like to, to look at them.
A question, Reggie, the first, uh, the amount that we would take over?
About 220 feet.
And do we know the condition and material of that?
At this point, we do not. So this, this is part of the stipulations that will be in the, the agreeing of taking over the line. If it does not meet our specs, then we will not assume responsibility of that 220 feet.
How long has it been in, do you know? 30 years or so?
Yeah, 90s.
So if, if they don't, if it doesn't meet the specs, then, um, the developer, then I would assume would need to bring it up to specifications, or what would happen?
If it does not meet specs, the developer will have to come into a line agreement with Beckwith Woods Association, or Beckwith Pines is able to drill a well if they choose. Just the position of where their property is at, a water line, a public main doesn't actually cross directly in front of his property, so as far as the ordinance goes, he can drill a well.
And the last option, I believe, is that, uh, the PUC could be petitioned to provide a waiver requiring...
Yes, that would be with the line agreement.
But that's the last?
That'd be the last option.
Is there a liability to the city in any of this?
Uh, the trees, going up the first 200, 200 feet, they are rather large, um, there is, there is some property close by, because I believe they are right on the property line. Out in front of the buildings, I believe there are lots of liabilities there with the electrical and the proximity of the building that's currently there.
But we're not proposing to take over those.
Right, we're not taking that part.
We're just talking the first 220 feet. And again, we would require in the easement, uh, the rights to be able to take down the trees, uh, again, if there's a leak.
Yeah, then we, we would have to find somebody to take down the trees and...
Right.
Counselor Ford?
Couple of questions, so, trees come down only if there's a leak?
Yes.
Okay, understand that. Last month, the month before, um, wastewater superintendent is in here saying he didn't want to take off the, take over the, the sewer line from the street to that first manhole. I'm wondering why we didn't just do a utility easement for the entire width of the roadway, get it done and do it, and it's under our control?
The, the water line goes down Beckwith Court, and the wastewater line is on the backside of the property, in two different locations.
It goes down and then out?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Answer my question.
I'm not sure if I heard this correctly, but i- is there a situation in this potential agreement where the City of Ellsworth would be left holding the financial bag?
Just on the first 200 feet.
We would...
We would be responsible for everything.
So if the, if it turns out that the, uh, the piping and so forth was inadequate and it broke, we have to fix it?
We would have to fix it, yes.
Right.
That's pretty exciting.
But the acceptance is subject to inspecting the line, correct?
Yeah.
This, this is one of those parcels of land that, that Steve and I like to call the donuts. If we let them build, uh, eight units up there on a well, we've missed the opportunity, number one, uh, to have eight more customers on the water system.
Correct.
Have the possibility of them putting in residential sprinklers for their safety, because a well to do that is a huge expense.
Yes.
So I think the liability and the possibility, uh, that whole project up there was engineered and inspected for Albert and Albert Small and his, his son, Mitch, um, I'm pretty sure that it was done to, under the watchful eye of a water superintendent, and I don't...
As far as I know, to my knowledge, it was not.
Really?
Yeah.
I didn't think he let anything on water in this town go by.
I didn't either.
But, I'm in favor of it.
Not a good point. Not a good point.
But what means are you going to determine the condition and quality of the pipe in the ground?
The developer will have to dig a couple of test pits down onto the main, so we can visually see what's there.
And break it.
So it'll be physically looked at?
Yes.
I would note it's an eight-inch line, correct? Which is far above a service line.
I'd bet my empty wallet that it's probably eight-inch ductile line.
Yeah.
And I would also remind the council that the line we replaced out on State Street last year was vintage, what, eighteen ninety?
Lots of blood joints came out of that one.
Thirty years, it's still in its infancy.
Tell that to Bango's Main Street.
So I guess that takes all of us off the hook.
Councillor.
Is, in order for this to go forward, they'll need to do the testing first, right?
Yes, yes, before final agreement is accepted.
So is this necessary to approve today, or in order to move that work forward?
I don't believe so. I don't know that for sure. It's been approved by planning board already.
I would say that, yes, it could be tabled, but the developer in this case, the more clarity you have, they have not yet purchased the land, and, you know, they're looking at investing in the site. You know, certainly the council could table it for a month, although you're not going to be able to inspect that probably for a while longer, right?
Yeah, it'll definitely be sprung.
But again, this is being brought on by the state's requirements through the PUC that you don't connect one private line to another.
Right.
And certainly, we can protect the city's interest through the conditions that we put forth before ever accepting...
Yes.
The line. Yes, there are some good-sized trees out there, but as long as you have a functioning easement that allows you to cut those trees, because it's unlikely that a leak's going to run the whole length of that.
Right.
You might have to take down one tree or two trees. And you may never have to take any trees.
Right.
So if I was to sit here and move to issue the intent of the city of Ellsworth to approve the acceptance of a portion of water line in Beckwith Court from High Street to where the water line will split to serve Beckwith Woods and Beckwith Pines, as soon as we do our due diligence on the installation and materials, and we have proper language that satisfies our needs for an easement.
That'll work for me.
I think that clearly sends a signal.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. All those in favor? All votes opposed?
You vote yea and nay?
Yes.
Councillor Beetham?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see a hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. Winre, the discussion.
Item twenty-four, council order number zero-two-one-eight-one-three, request of the police chief to designate Nolton Park, Harbor Park, Demeyer Field Complex, and the Moore Community Center as a safe zone.
Ms. Chairman, floor chief goes, we need to give due credit if she's watching at home, because I believe this came out of a conversation at Finian with Council Hudson. Remember, we sat here, talked and talked and talked, so if she's watching, let's give her due credit, that she brought this to us, too.
Absolutely.
Start is stealing thunder.
Thank you, Doran.
No apologies needed. Thank you, gentlemen, Chief Moser, the Ellsworth Police Department. And what I'm asking tonight is for the council to authorize the city manager to approve these four locations as safe zones. And by designating these areas as safe zones, basically what that does is that puts these areas on equal footing in the eyes of the law with school zones, when it comes to dealing with violations of drug nature and the criminal statute. And by designating these areas as safe zones, anywhere within a thousand feet of those areas become included in that safe zone, and any drug activity within that area, those charges can and will be elevated to an aggravated factor. So for example, if you had a trafficking, a drug trafficking situation that transpired on one of these, in one of these areas, that, once the police got involved with it, that charge would be elevated to aggravated trafficking. And essentially, what that does is, depending on the type of drug and some other factors, is it elevates it one step, one step above. So if you had a class D misdemeanor for trafficking in marijuana, let's say, for example, that would then be elevated to a class C felony, simply because of the location as being a designated safe zone. It only deals with drug violations, and the basic and one and only requirement is that, well, two requirements, one is that the city designates these areas, and then two, we have to post them, to notify people that it is in fact designated as a safe zone, drug-free zone, and simply state the statute, which requires that those areas be posted. Questions?
Councillors.
I would just say that I strongly support this. I think this is the right direction for the city. I think it sends a strong message in terms of what we value, and identifying these areas where our kids are located, I think is essential, so I couldn't support this any stronger than I do. Thank you.
I would like to just add that there are some other areas that we spoke about, and at a later time, we may look to expand to other areas in the city where children frequent. But essentially, with this, it's kind of a first wave. We want to, there is some expense incurred, estimated between twenty-five and thirty-five dollars per sign in order to post these areas, and each area will require extensive signing in order to make sure that we meet all the requirements of the law. So this is kind of an initial first wave, and then eventually, we may look to other areas of the city to expand.
Chief, a quick question. On the one-thousand-foot buffer, how far out do the signs have to go in that one-thousand-foot zone? For instance, if you have something at Nolton Park, and something occurs on the bike ped path, no sign is required on that path if it falls within the thousand feet?
Right, yeah. I mean, it's similar to a school zone, so if something, if something were to transpire, which we've actually had in years past, where drug activity has transpired along that walking bike path that crosses in front of the high school, one hundred feet from the property of proper, which you have to consider, I mean, it has to be like front steps. I mean, you know, you can't be talking about property lines, because that becomes too clouded and too gray of a, of a area that people wouldn't be expected to know. But parking lot, certainly the entrance, those type of more centralized, obvious school-ground locations, ball fields that are affiliated with the school, any of those areas, a thousand feet out from those areas would be encompassed into that safe zone. So the, I guess the long and short answer is no, there's no signage requirement within those extensions. Makes it a little bit more difficult from a prosecution, you know, from a prosecution standpoint, to, you know, go forward with the aggravated charges. But nonetheless, according to the letter of the law, they would still, that would still fall under the parameters of the safe zone or the school zone, regardless of signage.
Thank you. Councillor?
I thought I heard you or somebody say that there were four zones. I see only three mentioned.
The Moore Community Center included?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Is it missing?
It's missing from the actual motion. It's included in the body, but it was missing from the actual motion on the bodies. I apologize for that.
Okay.
Initially, there was some confusion with the Moore Community Center, because we were confused, well, one, the ownership issue, and where it's, you know, it's city property, but currently being leased. But the other issue was whether the preschool that's existing within the, and the daycare, whether that qualifies it already as a school zone. But basically, through conversations, city manager and I decided that the best thing to do would be to post the parking lot, and that way, we'd be in sure that we're covered either way.
Belts and suspenders.
Any others? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the city manager to designate Nolton Park, Demeyer Field, Ellsworth Harbor Park, and Moore Community Center as drug-free safe zones in accordance with Maine State Statute Title Thirty-A, and with our thanks to Police Chief Moser.
Second. Motion in the second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Move to go into executive session, discuss labor contracts in accordance with MRSA Title One, Chapter Thirteen, Section Four-oh-five, Paragraph Six-D. Second. Mr. Managers, are any staff you want to include? Heidi, eight-twenty-four. Crossway, Beetham, unanimous. Ms. Chairman?
Item number twenty-six, council order number zero-two-one-eight-one-four, discussion in action on the item from the executive session.
Ms. Chairman, move to approve the one-year contract with the Ellsworth Firefighters as presented, and authorize the city manager to sign said document.
Motion in the second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Wait, that happened too quick.